Both the ACT and SAT are given about seven times a year. These results are the annual report. And when I talk about the ACT, I'm talking about 2017. That report came to me like the day we left before the hurricane. I did not receive the latest SAT. That will be here hopefully in a week or two. So it's two different years, but similar data over those years. And it's noted in the graphs. We're going to go through the first 10 or 12 slides or so, and then the rest was given in an appendix. So you can study that and have fun with it later. Okay, so the SAT, it's been a long time, maybe since some of it have taken it. It contains three multiple choice subtests, reading, writing, and mathematics, and an optional essay. The tests are designed to measure the skills of how a student will do in post-secondary education. The score range on reading and writing and math is 200 to 800. Essay score is from 2 to 8, and that's optional. So the total score, when we talk about what somebody got on their SATs, it would be summing the reading and writing section together, and then the mathematics section, coming to a score range between 400 and 1,600. The first graph here, and you'll notice some very similar patterns among all of our tests, and interestingly enough, between schools. For the SAT reading score for 2012 to 2016, we did a five-year backup. And you can see that we are positively growing, and the state has done some decline. Our district's average score was 57 points higher than the state last time that this is recorded, in '16. We will always...
Yes? Sorry, Jan.
Does this reflect the changes the SAT is having as well?
It doesn't... In 2012, and I know there was a change within those years, but the same scale range is there.
Okay.
And the maximum allowable points for reading is...
What did I just say, 800?
Eight hundred. Total 800? Okay.
So you'll see that Pine View will always come out the top here on all of these, and you'll see that in the graphs in the back. Second highest in reading, though, for 2016 was Booker High School. The most improved school from '15 to '16 was Venice, that increased by 15 points.
It was Venice?
That was Venice. Okay. Yeah. Mathematics mean scores, you can see a very similar pattern. We're 60 points higher than the state for SAT math. Since 2012, we've increased by 14 points as a district. State has decreased by 17 points. Pine View again, the highest there, and Riverview the second highest. Pine View demonstrate, even though as high as they are, a 17-point increase from '15 to '16. And Booker High School showed a 14-point increase during this period. For the writing scores, you see the same similar graph for district and the state. We're 52 points higher than the state in writing. Pine View the highest, followed by Riverview. And Venice increased 21 points in their average writing. And the Polytech increased 20 points. And that was Venice again.
Venice again. So this increases the chances by, just so people understand, by getting a higher SAT, it means less people have to go to FSU, and more people will be able to get into University of Florida?
I'm not sure if that's what it means, but yeah.
Sometimes it's better if you just ignore them. It's a strategy I use pretty regularly.
Okay. So we'll go to the ACT now. There's four multiple choice tests in the ACT, English, Math, Reading, and Science, with an optional writing test. Again, measures success in post-secondary education. The score range here, though, is between 1 and 36. So you'll see less point increases, but each point is very significant. The composite score is the average of these... Composite score is the average of the four subtests, rounded to the nearest tall number. Here's how we do is the district and state on our composite scores. The district averages a minimum of 1.4 scores higher than the state in 2017. Those were our recent graduates. Over the past three years, the district's score has steadily increased to 21.9, and the state has declined slightly. Pine View's, of course, in the head, followed by Riverview and the Polytechnic High School. And you'll see that all the way through here on the ACT.
Do we encourage our students to take one test over the other? For example, with me, I'm not good in English. So I took the ACT because it only represented 25% of the total test.
There are preferences at the schools. And for example, Booker High School recommends, and they do have more students taking the ACT. Overall, I have it written here, we had 1,476 students take the SAT and 1719 take the ACT.
Oh, we had more people take the ACT?
Yes.
Oh, well, I would have thought the SAT would be more popular.
Yeah, I think part of the reason the ACT, for concordant score, for students to graduate, you have to take into consideration that these scores include all those students who are taking this exam for graduation purposes, too. If students did not pass the FSA, they can still take... The state's allowed some other tests and some scores on those tests, which are high and rigorous scores. So, you know, this is a reflection, as it is statewide, on a number of students taking the ACT for graduation purposes.
Didn't they change the war... I mean, it changed a long time ago when I took it, that you can take it multiple times, and it's your highest score? Or is that how it is now?
Well, for graduation purposes, definitely.
No, I mean, for college... I mean, so people encourage you to take it multiple times? That's what I'm saying.
And some universities will report, though, all of them, you know, and show that you've taken it multiple times. So I think we finish that slide. English mean scores, we're 1.5 higher than the state. Again, Pine View in the lead, with the Polytechnic now slightly ahead of Riverview. And all schools increased in six... From 2016 to 2017, with Riverview having a highest increase of 1.2 points. We have a separate reading subtest, and we are 1.2 points higher than the state. Oh, that was our minimum highest score over five years. But in '17, we were 1.8 points higher than the state. We've been steadily increasing, with our average score at 22.8 this past year. Pine View, followed by Riverview and the Polytech. And Riverview again showed the most improvement. Mathematics, we're 1.4... I mean, 2.2 higher than the state in 2017. We've been steadily increasing, and the state has declined since 2015. Pine View the highest, followed by Riverview and Polytech. And the Polytech made the most increasing improvement, of a .7 of a point. And up to you.
Yep. So, you know, when we approach the ACT/SAT, there are some things we do that are very deliberate. And there's other things, and I'll talk about this at the end, that we're moving towards, I think, a more standard approach across all of our schools, trying to help them meet the needs for every student. But the idea behind, there's multiple groups of students that benefit from this preparation that we might be able to provide at the schools. First-time test takers, obviously preparing for college entry, that's your big group. But students who want to raise their previous scores for college entry, just as you said, Eric, students who need to test for concordant purposes, which is very important and critical. It helps the graduation rate as we use this as a concordant score. The next few pages.
Quick question. PSAT.
Mm-hmm.
Are we using that?
Yes.
Or using that with everyone?
Yeah. We... Our sophomores take the PSAT across the district, and it's paid for by the state still.
Okay, that's what I was...
So, yes.
Right. Right.
But they were trying to do some correlation with that over time. And it does come into play now more than ever. I'll touch on that a little bit as we work through this. You'll see the next few pages are test preparation activities at each of the schools. Those activities will range from actual ACT/SAT prep courses at some of the schools. You have to have a teacher that feels qualified, and you have to find space in your schedule. And obviously, you know, you're limited on the number of students that can access that. Many of the schools offer access to courses after school. Sometimes those are fee-based. More often than not, they are fee-based. Most of the schools provide a boot camp or a high-intensity test preparation prior to SAT or ACT, and we do that also for FSA. And I think something that shows a lot of promise right now, College Board has formed a relationship with the Khan Academy. Everybody's familiar with Khan Academy. And they have a... The data coming out of their SAT prep course is really good. So we are working to... It's a big, big process, but we're working to get every one of our ninth graders... Our strategy is ninth and 11th graders to start with, and then we're going to pick everybody else up through the process. But the Khan Academy courses, they'll have access to every Khan Academy preparation course. And the SAT prep course just happens to be one of those. And the data coming out of that is very good. So we have to get our students registered, easy access, teachers familiar with it. It's a lot of training, a lot of time, but that does show a lot of promise, and so we're moving towards that. Schools use mock exams also to prepare students for these high-stakes tests. And you can read all of those. I don't want to read those for each of the schools. Some challenges, test preparation challenges. You know, there's fees involved with assessment. Yes?
Do we do a well enough job of notifying the students about the fee waiver process? Because, you know, I end up having to pay for so many kids to take the ACT because they weren't aware of the fee waiver process.
Yeah, I would like to say yes. So I'm going to say we do a pretty good job, but obviously, if you're having to pay for a few, but here's...
More than a few.
Here's the situation. There's only so many fee waivers in play for every student. There are... You get two ACT, two SAT if you are on free and reduced lunch, okay? So many times those students, and the ones you're paying for, I bet have more to do with...
I found it, yes, I found it one time.
FSA, aren't they? They're more FSA-related.
Yes, yes, FSA-related.
Yeah. So those students have probably exhausted all those opportunities to take those exams. So we do a really good job. I mean, that's important, that we make sure that every student has access to this assessment. But not only that, we want to get better at making sure they have access to preparation. And that's always a challenge for, you know, even a Booker High School or Northport High School. So I think we've put some new strategies in place. I'll talk about that in just a minute also. So some of those challenges is to make sure that we are communicating and getting that information out to students, and they are accessing it. Sometimes you lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink. You know, you want to make sure that they're using the resources they have available. Schools have to solicit funds in many cases for this test preparation. Not everybody has the resources, every school has the resources, you know, to pay for somebody to come in for test preparation. Booker does a really... Booker High School does an excellent job. They've identified a specialist in this area, and they use that specialist in a number of ways. Other schools have followed that model and are doing more and more of that. But they are accessing funds from the Education Foundation Rotary, Community Resources, other community resources that we have that are willing to support these opportunities. And then the constant monitoring and communication with students and parents, preparing for these tests. You know, we've all had children, and they show up to take the tests. You know, how much preparation did they have?
Breathe. Bridgette, I need you to breathe, Scott.
Oh, I started talking about me, and I'm like, okay. Interesting, and I was aware of this as well, and I understand, when it comes to test preparation and that being key, and that we do not have an even access, as far as the cost to do so. Certain schools have access to funds outside of their fundraiser, foundations, and some don't. As a district, we see that the value of test preparation, why is that not something we in our budgetary process can plan for and support those schools accordingly?
We have really not done any goal-setting around ACT/SAT. We have some goals that go in and around FAFSA completion. Most of our district goals revolve around the state assessment program, and that's where we've chosen to put our resources. Doesn't mean that it would exclude us from investing in these, but most of our strategic priorities fall around the state assessment program. Now, where the sweet spot would be, there's lots of discussion about moving ACT/SAT into the state assessment program, so that all of that investment that we're making in an FSA score, which means nothing when you apply to a local university. So yes, we have a lot of time and money invested in the state assessment program that really has no value outside of determining promotion and graduation. Whereas if we made those investments in SAT and ACT, it would have value as they left our system.
Makes sense. Shirley.
Follow-up on that. What are the problems? I mean, some... They were saying that they don't correlate the SAT/ACT to what the FSA is. What are some of those problems that we are encountering, or the state's encountering, on switching that? Do you know?
They're doing another concordance study right now. I think the first one was insufficient, and they're looking at the psychometrics. They measure two different things right now. So you have teachers that have been for years teaching to the FSA standards, and now you're trying to apply that to a totally different animal, so to speak. And to find that appropriate concordance score, that's fair. I've never seen the concordance scores go down, however, over the years, when they put new concordance scores, and in fact, they usually raise the bar. So we have to be careful of what we wish for, too, I guess.
And I think you hit... The big issue is the standards. We have a standards-based assessment with their FSA. It's closely aligned to what the Florida Core Standards are, and the SAT and ACT is not.
Yeah, but, I mean, there was all this big push for those common standards. So then, why doesn't the SAT/ACT look at what those common high school standards are and make it all the same? I guess you're saying, why not also?
Because I think what they're testing is how well you're going to do in college, not how well you understand the material.
I also see that when I'm looking at the appendix, there's listing how the schools did. And Imagine School is listed in the ACT but not the SAT. Did they not take any SATs, or did that just get dropped?
I'll have to go check. I'll go check. Hold a minute.
I'll have to go back, too, because imagine if I remember didn't have a graduating class that froze the historical data. So I'll have to go back and see if they had one the last two years.
Well, they've got ACT tests listed, but not SAT scores.
Could be. I'll have to go look. Thank you.
Well, 2017, right? Did that ACT data?
Yeah. Let me see if they had. And I don't have any SAT data.
Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on.
I don't have any SAT data reported this past year, because it's not in.
Right, so that could be why it's not listed.
Okay.
So, you know, we have some... Those challenges are inherent. And I think what you're going to see, Ms. Sigler, you talked about having access at all of our schools. I think we're getting better and better at providing those opportunities as we see what has positive results. We want to make sure we're spending our money on positive results. But, you know, we've just really gone through a difficult budget... Some difficult budget cycles, where we didn't really have room in our schedules and our staffing to, you know, to put people in there to do these types of things. So I think at some point in time, we can have that conversation. But, you know, I'd like to conclude on this. You know, we're very, you know, very proud of the fact that in Sarasota County, and there's a number of factors that go into this, but our scores continue to get better, and the states drop. It's the same samples. I mean, essentially, they're using this assessment for the students who struggle with graduation. So that's something that we can feel good about, and I think there's some deliberate steps along the way, some things that were intentional that probably are resulting in this type of thing. Certainly, we've gone over the Test Preparation Act access at all the schools. But what we've been doing, and this is part of the board's vision, too, over time, when we started talking about providing access to rigorous coursework. You know, the key is, are we getting kids into ACT courses that will prepare them for the ACT and the SAT? Are we getting them into AP courses? Are we getting them into IB? Are we getting them into ACE courses? Well, the board stepped up, and they saw the value in that, and they funded upfront, the funding, provided the funding upfront to add IB and ACE programs at all of the schools that did not have those. At one time, it was just Riverview High School, and everybody else was reliant on AP program. AP's rigorous. Certainly, all the universities look at AP, and it has a great stature there. But again, once we added those programs, we were able to provide opportunities for students. We've added, even if you look at our dual enrollment opportunities that we provided to students. So as more students that traditionally did not access those courses, access those courses, those scores will continue to raise. And I think that's part of what you're seeing. We have more students now. We've identified them, and we're providing them opportunities to take those courses. And again, it was a deliberate, intentional thing to do on the part of the board, as well as district curriculum folks.
And I think those are great programs. I think it's great that the board is funding those programs. But going back to my previous question is, what about the people in the lower socioeconomic sector, the people who are failing the FSAs, who are taking these tests, who don't... Who exhaust the two fee waivers? I mean, I think it's great that we have... Those are not the people taking the... I'm guessing those are not the people taking the AP or pre-IB or the ACE program. I'm going on a limb here.
I can answer for one school. I've worked on Booker High School SAC. I've been at Booker High School SAC for many years.
Mr. Bobby and his program.
Mr. Bobby and his program. And I know that when we ran out of waivers, we either asked other schools if there was waivers, or we funded it through SAC dollars. So we... She's definitely the principal, and her staff have made sure that nobody was out of a waiver.
Oh, no, she beats the bushes.
So I think we went... That school, I can speak for.
Yeah. No, I agree at that school, I agree, she beats the bushes, and she tries to raise the money. But I was thinking of globally, district-wide. I mean, Dr. Shelley, she fights for every dollar she can get. But I was talking about globally. What about those students who aren't taking the...
I think the other schools are providing those opportunities. Quite honestly...
I mean, are there kids who aren't able to take the ACT because they can't afford it? That's what I'm trying to get at. Who need to pass that test in order to graduate?
I think...
But are the lower socioeconomic that don't have the money? I guess that's my question.
And I don't know that we could, you know, where we would have that data. I don't think we'd have it. But here's what I would say. I know what the schools are doing, and they're... If a student, you know, they have this desire to get those students to the same level, while all of us have that same desire, and they're providing every resource they can. Some of those resources come in the form of, you know, funding through the AP, IB, ACE program, where schools generate funding based on that. And some of that money can be used for a number of opportunities like this. So here's what I would say. I can't answer specifically through data, but I have to believe... I don't get calls from people saying, hey, my kid can't afford this. You know, Dr. Shelley's persistent, and she's going to get what she needs. But I think the others do, too. I think they do in their own way. So I don't know. I think it's worth a conversation, and we'll keep that conversation with Penny Reed and Jordan Gaiden's counselors. We can continue that conversation.
Jane. Well, I think it starts before high school, and I understand, Steve, that that's your thing. And I think it's great. And I think we need to be doing more with Khan Academy and so forth, because I'm hearing great things about the opportunities that's providing, the flexibility that's providing students, and I think that's great, to supplement instruction. But I go back to second grade, and I'm seeing and hearing about many school districts now who are taking second-grade minority boys in particular and giving them a gifted test, and trying to find those gifted students at an earlier age. And I think, you know, we ought to open gifted up to a lot more students, actually, than we are, and so forth. But taking those students in second grade and identifying those students that have the ability to go into gifted programs, and trying to align that much, much earlier. And here's another thing. Chess. Chess has been proven in many of the school districts to align very much with that, to teach young men in particular how to sit still and how to concentrate, because they don't know how to do that. And so I'd like to have a discussion at a workshop sometime about just this, because I think it would make your jobs so much easier if we could look at that in earlier. Laura.
In just a few minutes, you're going to hear from Dawn and I talking about the gap, and your dream is going to come true.
Bridgette, ask and you shall receive. No, I think I just want to maintain, and I think this is something we've hit on, and I know we're doing a lot in a variety of ways to expand the access to these tests and preparation, but there is no question that there are certain elements, which we already identify, that there are inequities. And there is clear indication that that preparation is valuable. And I know Dr. Shelley just crushes it, but I also would like to, because this is here and we can see the data, I'd like to say, you've done an amazing job, and you've proven that this is clearly valuable. We're not going to make you continue to hit the pavement. We're going to support that. And then she can continue on some other aspect. Or not just specific to her, I know this goes beyond that, but she's a great example. And I'm just curious, how much does, and if you don't have it right now, you can provide it later, is how much does something like, I know, is it Dr. Bobby or Mr. Bobby? Mr. Bobby? Something like that? What are we talking about from a cost standpoint?
Here's what I would say. Those funds that she uses for Mr. Bobby, the original contract is through the... It's through a staffing unit. So that money does come out of the district for Booker High School. And certainly, we do look at areas that need additional support. So that is from a staffing unit that she converts into contract dollars, so she can, you know, she's identified that as a high need there. So that does happen. I can't give you the exact number on the... I might have a ballpark, but it's... I don't want to say it, because I could be way off.
No, yeah, that's fine.
But that's an easy number to get.
Okay.
So she's looking at her staffing formula, looking at Booker's staffing formula. She's been able to identify areas where she can shift resources, and that's an area that she chooses to do so, because that helps her graduation rate as well. It helps those students prepare for college and career readiness. So a couple other things, and then I'll be finished. I think a couple things that's important to mention. You know, with the realignment of our administrative teams at the high school level, the APCs or the AP over curriculum, in our regular meetings, when we come together monthly, those people are talking amongst each other, and it's providing a great opportunity for people who are solely dedicated to a curriculum mission at each of the high schools, which was sorely needed. We had the principals and APs driving that before, and we were obviously pretty effective. But we're excited about the fact that they have an opportunity to share these ideas. So they will be sharing ideas around this... Around AP and... Or, I'm sorry, ACT and SAT preparation. So that position's going to help us in that way. Also, I think it's important to look at the Education Foundation and all of the foundations. But the Education Foundation's just... Their college and career readiness initiative is going to have a real impact on this data in the next two to three years. So a lot of things are going on, a lot of it intentional from a school district standpoint, a school board standpoint, the foundations. It's just like typically, if the community sees an issue in this community, they want to deal with it. They find a way to deal with it. I'm excited. These numbers, I think, will continue to get better and better and better over time. And we'll provide that access to those kids who need that access and may have been traditionally not included, which kind of leads us to our next conversation.
Thank you. Thank you for excellent, again.
Okay.
Hey, Denise. Can you move Dawn's PowerPoint?
It's a board meeting, a work session.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just all...
Good. Thank you. So last up with the culture. Again, this is a presentation we could have canceled, because we have more information coming after the committee meets, and they were to meet last week. So Dawn is leading our Achievement Gap Committee, and it didn't happen to provide you the detail that we would like, including what we're planning to do, which is each of the items that you're about to see in this gap report will connect with a data-driven, in Eric's words, actionable item. And so that has to have committee input. We also left out of this some ideas that we think the committee will go for, but until they meet, they need to be first up. So again, we could have canceled this, but I at least want you to have an idea of where we're headed. And so Dawn is going to explain our why on what we're doing here.
I feel like I'm at Harvard again. We had these types of speakers as well. So speaking of Harvard, the PowerPoint that you have has a picture there of our group that was at Harvard. That's the committee that we will assemble of principals and district leaders, and even from the Sarasota County Community Foundation, a member there as well. So we're excited to meet with this group. But one of the biggest takeaways we had from Harvard is that every organization that does an amazing job, it's considered a great organization, understands why they do what they do. And in Sarasota County, you know, all of the examples that we've talked about already already for today, it's about having the moral imperative to extend excellence to every child, to make sure that across the board, every child has the opportunity, irregardless of what factors may be in their background, to do well and to have excellence. And also, we're focusing on this gap presentation because we know that there are gaps, and there are deficiencies, or gaps compared to, with our black, our Hispanic, our ESE, and economically, and ELL groups, so we want to make sure that we do everything we can to overcome that.
And then, good organizations, whether they're business or school boards, we need to know how we're going to do that, and for us, we definitely have this growth mindset in this district that we are going to make sure that our children are told in curriculum, this learning is important, they can do it, and no one is going to give up on them, smart is something you can get. So, that mindset is important for how we begin, and then, of course, we intentionally plan with data, you know, unfortunately, we don't want, well, fortunately, and unfortunately, we don't want to test children all the time, right? So, we have limited opportunities to collect data, we want that data to be good data, and so, the data that we are dependent on right now is listed there on the how, it's important that we give our teachers access to data that helps us move forward.
And all great organizations also know what they're doing, so, one of the things that we believe, from my perspective as a principal, and my perspective now at the district office, is that the teacher is the single most important influence on student achievement. There are many things that we have to overcome, there are many things that we have to address through policy, through initiatives, but the teacher is the most important influence on student achievement. And also, we believe, and research shows us, that there are specific strategies across the board, from kindergarten children to our oldest children in high school, that are building relationships with children, and also utilizing our multi-tiered system of support, or the MTSS process, to create specific academic and behavioral interventions to overcome those barriers. So, the next two pages reflects this whole idea of collective efficacy, this whole idea of everybody in the organization taking on the aspect of what can we do to make sure that we reach every child every day, so that we can overcome this achievement gap. So, what you may know, and I'll just kind of, you know, summarize a few of these bullet points, because you've heard about some of these, you may know about, of course, Hattie's visible learning strategies, also, that one of the things we're excited about is we're looking at increasing minority students in our accelerated coursework, you'll hear a little bit more about that as well, and also, every school creates routinely or annually PBS plans, and we'll have those plans available to the public as well, our PSS department is working on that right now, and our PSS department also supports our staff to understand how to use data to drive the lowest quartile, the lowest performing 25% of students at every school. Something that we're excited about is that every school will spend time this year developing mentorship plans for at-risk children, this is something that we've discovered as something that makes a big difference in supporting children who are at risk. Also, one of the things that schools will continue to do is to redefine parent involvement as family engagement, to recognize that, you know, many of our children who are considered at-risk don't have the traditional family structure that you would expect as parents. We have grandparents, we have aunts, and all kinds of other wonderful dynamics happening in supporting of children.
Yeah, I apologize, I may have missed, what is PBIS?
Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. So, we also will have our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support teams, to create individualized learning plans for every child who is at risk, with the purpose of making sure children don't slip through the cracks. We've also begun this process at a few schools this year, where we have an online process for MTSS to roll that out, which really does help with making sure that data is available to schools in an instant, we heard about mobility rates earlier in this presentation, this will help with that. Our dropout prevention coordinator, that's myself, I meet weekly with our APAs from the high school and our middle school RTI system principals, and the purpose of that alternative education meeting is to, of course, review challenges that have come up, but also, to really focus on restorative practices that we can put in place in the schools. And also, with our reading recovery initiative, our MTSS teams will immediately meet with teachers who are in need of additional services at first grade, academic services at first grade, and looking at that data. And every school will also investigate before and after-school programs for supportive at-risk children as well, this school year to be included in the PBIS plans.
Jane.
In our reading recovery program, Dawn, do we have volunteers working in that program with the teachers that have been trained?
Yes, we do, we have a few volunteers, including our former superintendent, but, go ahead.
Does it require, you know, what does it require, because I'm hearing from some people, we don't have enough teachers, we don't have enough volunteers for that program, what is involved to get more buy-in and more assistance?
And that's a really good question, and I will tell you that our reading recovery Ohio State University retired professor has created a module system that will help us train volunteers and train, actually, the other first-grade colleagues, it's incredible, and that's in place now this year.
Could I ask you a question? So, could JFCAS volunteers be part of that?
Yep.
Because I have a lot of them at ME.
Yes, 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 I was just about to add, we, when we rolled out reading recovery last year, we have a large volunteer population, many of whom are retired teachers, and I had a retired reading recovery teacher from up north who was very interested in doing that as well, so, now that it's in our schools...
You have your rocking readers program, which is phenomenal.
Yes, yes, yes.
That is phenomenal, and so, I just want to say that when this committee meets, one of the things, given this previous discussion, I think we'll all be in agreement to also add on here, our superintendent's expectation, every child every day, whatever it takes, we'll add on here, every child who needs or wants to take the ACT or SAT, we will find funding for, so, we will make that an expectation at every school, there won't be any question then how it's done. Moving on, in elementary school, you know already about the math grant, you know already about reading recovery, what you may not know is one that you just mentioned earlier, we are proceeding with plans to screen every Title I second-grade student, and hopefully identify some additional students for our advanced work class or gifted programs, not just gifted, we are going to be using the Naglieri, and thanks to, actually, Stephen Covert and Pineview, he is finding a way to fund that, because it's kind of an expensive program.
Now, I saw that, I think we've talked about this in one meeting before, that state statute allows you to have a different cutoff if you have underrepresented minorities in your gifted program in your district, are we doing that, or are we leaving the same cutoff regardless of socioeconomic and race?
You know, I'm going to have to bow to Sonya, because I, as a principal, I knew that. Can I have Sonya come up?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Well, it's definitely, the rules changed, so Sonya.
Yes, under state statute, we allow a Plan B, which encourages any student from minority groups to be able to access accelerated programs, and we are promoting that, we continue to promote that.
There you go. The other thing, as far as elementary school, that you may or may not have known, all of our elementary schools invite their surrounding pre-K providers into programs that they're doing for kindergarten, training that they're doing with their kindergarten teachers, you know, we understand the issues that our local pre-K providers have in training, and also, we want to make sure that those families feel very comfortable while their children are in pre-K to come into our schools.
Bridgette. So, you're saying we invite all providers in the area, their teachers or their families?
Both.
Okay.
So, the principals have been given an access kind of form that says, here are your providers, here's a form letter, please invite those providers, pre-K providers, and the families that attend those programs to your school for not only kindergarten roundup, but are there other opportunities, other cool things that are happening, your carnival, your auction, your whatever, so, every principal has that to send on.
And training, so are we including professional development for, so, talk to me about that, because I know that's been a, the disconnect has been a big issue in trying to work towards it, so I'm glad we're, it sounds like we're moving closer to it, so...
Yeah, and we are moving closer to that one. So, when kindergarten teachers have training, we've asked every principal to encourage their kindergarten teachers to invite in the local providers by sending out notes, here are the trainings that we're having.
That's amazing. Are we working with the ELC, or who's helping us, because I mean, there's so much, there are a lot of private providers, and there's a lot, quite frankly, so...
So, what we've done is have, we have a V2K committee, as you're probably very familiar with, they were instrumental in getting the Patterson Foundation to support the literacy bags that were presented to you, so that committee sent out a listing of all the providers to every elementary school and to those principals, and said, here are all of the providers, please note the ones that are in your area, which principals know pretty well, you know, the local mom and pop, and the children first, or larger providers, and then they have sent those letters of invitation for training for events at their schools.
That's great, and how long, when did we start that?
I mean, it's... It was toward the end of last year that we started doing that with, through the V2K program.
Great, that's great, great, thanks.
And then, finally, secondary schools have several initiatives as well, in middle schools, we have career advisors, you may have heard about this already, and they work with every child to develop an individualized student plan, but then also, in Project, our Project 10 teams at the high schools are specifically focused on monitoring data and providing interventions to our at-risk children to help close that gap, and also help them to graduate with their cohort on time.
Excuse me a minute, do you, when you have career advisors, are those employees, or are you also utilizing volunteers?
This is specifically speaking to career advisors who are employees.
Because I run across career advisors who could do that for...
Volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah, I have two of them right now.
So, it's really both, at the middle school and SPHS, we put career advisors on the district payroll, but we continue to have programs at our high schools in which they're staffed by volunteers, and so, one employee on a middle school campus would welcome the assistance of a volunteer, when you say they're going to meet with every student to do an individual plan, and so, once again, if you have volunteers that have an interest in career advising, we've got a place for them.
My problem has been that, first off, you were two new opening schools, there were some transition principals, so I lost some time there, and now with the hurricane, so I have all these volunteers waiting to go into ME, Booker, and Booker High School, that I will eventually be able to contact the teachers and the principals and talk to them. It's been really hard, because there's been so much change.
I'm sure that'll be welcome support as well at those two schools. And then the last thing here that we're excited about, in the high schools, we have a committee that is looking to develop an academy for future minority educators in high schools, and we have a collaboration that's beginning with USFSM to get this program in our schools at the beginning of the 18, 19 school year, so we're very excited about that. So, in closing, I just want to say, I'm so excited to work with this program, we're closing this achievement gap, I know it's a focus of this committee, but it's also such something that I see such momentum behind with every, you know, individual that I've worked with at the district office and at the school level as well.
Thank you very much, Dawn, but I would also like to see at your next report where we actually see data, and how we're progressing, and how we're doing, and what it is that we're striving for, so we know whether we're on track or off track, this is something that everybody keeps talking about, but we always keep looking at it in the rearview mirror, and everybody just sits down and says, you know, shrugs their shoulders, you know, I hope that we can see the data and see how we're growing, how we're progressing. I know, before I was on the board, Jane, you know, was really instrumental with the Eagle Academy, she had me come out there and bring in people out there, they're very infectious, and one of the things, you go out there, you would see that they had kids take tests at the beginning of every year, at the end of the year, so they can, you know, measure summer reading loss, and so, you know, I like to know, how are we doing? How is this, how is the group, I mean, that took the test at the beginning of this school year, how do they compare to the previous year? How did the summer academies, you know, do, do we do summer reading loss? You know, I'm a numbers guy, and I like to see the data, and I want to get information that's actionable, that we can actually, you know, do things on, because I want to make sure that your time is spent in such a way that it actually has results at the end of the day, so, thank you.
One of the great lessons learned from the Eagle Academy was that they had a data collection plan upfront, and one of the things that each one of these elements will focus on is what is the plan for data collection and data analysis from the beginning for each one of these points.
And evaluation of all the different programs that you referenced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item belongs to you.
Okay. The next item is a discussion of our board, our school board meetings, do you, so it'll show you when our winter break is, and the spring break, and, do you have any comments here, Eric?
I assume we're just talking about our board meeting, not the winter break, but my, I have two concerns, and that's, the first one is February 20th, it's very hard for me, when I get my packet on Friday, I'm assuming I'll get my packet at the end of the day on Friday, and then on Monday, we're closed, and Tuesday, we have the meeting, it's like, when do I call to have questions? Is it possible for that meeting, you can do some sort of finagling where I get the packet either Thursday or Wednesday, so that if I do have questions, I actually have somebody I can call? Is that...
What I've been doing is I now change my meeting dates to the Friday, and Romney Zo has the material.
No, but you only get the workshop items that Friday, and if Monday they're closed, how could you change your meeting dates?
Meet on Thursday.
He wants the meeting, he wants the packets on Thursday instead of Friday.
Unless you have a DeLorean, unless you have a time machine, I don't know how that would work, yeah, 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 and then the other one is, I love, 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 love November 13th, I just don't know if we're, this is going to be election year, I think that we're required to have it on November 20th, but if we can keep it November 13th, I love it, because my wife likes to go out of town for that week of Thanksgiving week.
Well, there's nothing that says that we can't keep it, but...
We have the statute.
Is, do we want to keep it, or do we want to move it to...
Well, actually, the statute says you have to have the reorganization two weeks, I mean, Art Hardy knows more, but two weeks after the election, you can't have it the week after the election, it has to be two weeks after the election.
The 20th was...
Is what statute says, but you have here the 13th, which I love better, because I can go to Destin for the week, but I think statute...
I agree, do we need to ask somebody if that's all right to hold it on the 13th instead of the 20th?
That would be a reorg meeting as well, and a reorg meeting has, thank you.
Has to be on the 20th, but I prefer, I like your idea, Carolina, the 13th.
Unfortunately, as Eric says, the statute says, in those election years, we have to do it two weeks after the election, which I haven't looked at the calendar, but I'm assuming that that means the week of Thanksgiving.
Right.
That's what happened to us last year.
My wife actually loves to talk to me.
20th.
You know, maybe, maybe that's something we can talk to our legislators about, there's actually time to make that change before we...
I'm sure this is not the only, in fact, I know this is not the only school board that this has become an issue for over the years.
No.
Yeah, especially when most of the elections are done in August anyway.
Zo just asked a question, do we want two meetings that month, because that's why we're on the 13th, because of the, we only have one meeting in November?
Yeah, I think we ought to leave it on the 13th and push for our legislators to make the change.
Well, you can, I mean, you have to have the reorganization meeting on the 20th, you don't have to, I mean, it can just be the reorganization meeting.
Yeah, but if we have to be here on the 20th, we have to be here on the 20th, we don't want to be here on the 20th, is the point.
You have to be here.
Understood.
You have to by law, but you can change the law, that's what I'm saying, we've got somebody who's so in with these legislators, that if he wants to go away on the 20th...
Not even the legislative liaison for the board, so...
Bridgette, I know you mentioned this, and I noticed this earlier, historically, at least since I've been on the board, we've had one meeting in July, one meeting in December, I think that's just because it was always done, and I know we can be flexible based on what's going on, but when did we have, why do we only have one meeting in November? When did that change?
I don't know.
Because I don't...
I think it was because we're trying to move it to the 13th, did we want a 6th and a 13th, or do we have them?
No.
Where, when, this division, who created this, where did this come from? Who created this? So, where did the one meet, that's what I'm saying, where did the one meeting come from in November? So...
I knew that you didn't want to meet before Thanksgiving, so...
Okay, okay, no problem, no, 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 I just wanted, I wasn't sure when, that's all I was getting clarification for, I don't, so, the reason we're putting one meeting is because of Thanksgiving? I don't, so the reason we're putting one meeting is because of Thanksgiving? But...
In October, we also only have one meeting shown, so it would be...
No, we've got two.
Oh, we got two.
We've got a yellow one and a blue.
Mine's not...
October 2nd and October 16th. And then we only have November 13th, but I just, I worry that we only have one meeting. I think there's plenty, I just, that's my concern. I think there's...
We also only have one meeting in December.
Exactly.
So we need to be careful that you don't have too many weeks off in between because things come in. The business of the board still continues.
No, I agree. That's my point. I don't think we should, I'm in support of having more than one meeting in those months. I think that that is our responsibility.
Historically, you, looking at the dates that are here, you would have had a meeting on the 6th, realizing that's an election day, but we have, I mean, there have been meetings on election day before.
Indeed.
And on the, and on the 20th. There's no magic to, to the 6th. Your legal obligation is to have at least one meeting a month. You can have as many, more than that as you want.
Right.
As long as you have one. And they don't have to, other than the one on the 20th, they don't have to be on Tuesday either.
But I would not want to shake up our community because anybody else who does, it's always the first and the third week of the month.
So we're going to go back on the November to the 6th and the 20th?
If you all want to do that.
I don't want to, but I think we're required to.
It's either that or the 13th and the 20th.
I'd rather the 6th.
The problem with the 13th from a guy, from the guy who initially got elected, it was really, really frustrating that you guys had, I was voted in on, you know, essentially on that November and you guys had another meeting and I had to sit in the audience and I couldn't be, participate. And then in the 1st, the 20th was a reorg meeting.
You didn't get voted in in November.
Wait, 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 can you repeat that?
So what happened was the year that I got, I got elected, I guess, quote unquote.
You became a board...
I became a board member on that Tuesday.
Great.
I came a board member on that Tuesday, then you guys had a board meeting like on the 15th of November. So there was a, there was a board meeting, technically I was elected on the 15th and you guys still had another board meeting.
Well, we don't reorg...
I was sworn in the week after you had a board meeting. So there was an election in November, you guys had another board meeting, and then I was sworn in.
In December, two weeks after.
No, I was sworn in in Thanksgiving week. So you guys, you guys had, you guys had the election and then the Tuesday after the election, you guys had another board meeting and then you guys had the reorg meeting, the year that I got elected.
So does moving that to November 20th address that concern?
Yeah, having the meeting at the same day as the organizational meeting addresses that concern.
Yeah. So to November 20th, the question is, what other meeting do we have? Is it on the 6th on election day or on the 13th?
Well, we have them on election day before at 6:30. It's a pain, but...
It's a pain. I agree.
So am I hearing that? You want it the 6th or the 20th?
No, we want it on the 13th.
We want it on the 13th. We want it on the 13th.
You have to have it on the 20th.
I know, well, then I know.
What other meeting do you want?
Then I guess it has to be the 6th and the 20th.
So we're going to have two meetings or one?
Two meetings in November. We're going to go back to the regular.
And I just want to clarify something I said before when I mentioned about February 20th. It also occurs on September 4th, the same issue. The day before the February, September 4th, we have the day off, so. So it'd be those two dates, Dr. Bowden. There'd be those two dates where I would like the read ahead for the workshop, not on Friday.
I think that just the rule has to be two full workdays and so...
That's fine too.
That's, that's why it's on Friday.
Instead of trying to calendar it out, we'll just make sure you have it two full workdays.
Well, Friday's not two full workdays. That's one, one.
And Tuesday, because we don't meet, the first Tuesday of the month, we don't meet till 6:30.
So two full workdays is now the rule? Correct? Okay, good. Two full workdays.
That's what is there.
I have another suggestion. It shows that on March 6th, we're going to be meeting at Venice City Hall. Could we put this on this calendar? And could we also show, somehow note the graduation dates on here? Because that would be nice when I'm making up my calendar.
I don't think they've worked them out yet. I really don't.
Okay.
I don't think schools have gotten them.
Oh, we do. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Those venues fill up. We, we book a year. When we leave there that day, we reserve the date for the next year.
Okay. So just send them out to us?
Sure.
Zo, graduation dates? Just send them out for us, please. Thank you.
So we change our workshop date in November to the 20th, correct?
Well, can we talk about that? At a workshop, we decided that we were going to move workshops to the third Tuesday of the month when it had a 6:30 start. And then we said, wait a minute, we'd already publicly noticed those. And so, do you want to do workshops on the day that you have 3 o'clock meetings or workshops on the day you have 6:30 meetings?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
That's contrary to what you said the last time? That's why I'm clarifying.
Well, what I was talking about the last time, Todd, was that we were having a problem finishing up all of the material that we had in our workshops. So what I suggested is that we also add a workshop before our evening meeting, before our 6:30 meeting, if we didn't have enough time and it was one day to do workshop material.
Or we can start earlier.
That's, yeah.
I prefer to start earlier.
Consistently.
I don't mind 10 o'clock, but I do not want to start earlier than that. I don't want to start at 8 o'clock in the morning.
You don't, do you think 10 o'clock is early?
No, I don't think it's early. I think it's, it's right on target. Like this morning, I was pulling stuff off of my computer for today's meeting.
This was a unique circumstance, I think, obviously given Hurricane Irma, so, but I would say consistently, we run out of time. There is substantial board business to be in the future as we've all talked about. We're going through a very intensive policy review that's going to require, Art smiling, that's going to require a substantial amount of work. So I just worry that, I just particularly, I mean, this is our, we are hired and paid for this role. And so 8:30 start times to me, especially when I look at what time our, half the staff gets in, that is not an unreasonable time to start a business day.
I would not say 10 o'clock is on time. I would say 8:30 is on time.
We can do 8:30.
Whatever we need.
I can do, I can do 8:30. But I don't think you're still going to have enough time. That's what I'm telling you. If we don't have enough time to fulfill all of the material that Dr. Bowden is presenting and you guys are asking for, then we need to add it to the Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month. We need to have a workshop before our 6:30 board meeting.
Well, and this could be our base calendar and as we need to, we can call meetings on the other Tuesdays if necessary.
Outside of tax season, yeah, I agree.
During tax season.
Can I go back to, rather than her just sending us the note, these are when the graduations, can we add this to the calendar or not?
Sure.
And then write down on the bottom what whose are in?
This is only a draft.
Okay. Well, so when, all right, so that she understands that I'm not just saying, just send us the date, add the dates to our calendar.
Zo got it, right?
She's not.
Is it possible to get this electronic so I can send it to my assistant? Okay, thanks.
I want to send it to my assistant too.
I'll just...
Okay. I'm not allowed to patch my calendar at the office.
Since I am my assistant, I'll take care of it. All right.
Thank you, Katie.
I hold myself accountable for that.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay, so we're good?
I believe so.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Are you sure you don't want to, I just don't want someone fucked in the head.
That might actually...
We can't stand on a rolling chair, Mr. Robinson. How about you hold your chairs? How about I go get one that doesn't have wheels underneath it?
No.
Problem solver. A swivel rolling chair. I'm a gator. I'm a CBI balance.
That's what I say, like, don't stand on this.
I don't think I was clear though. Were you clear?
Let me check this right here.
We have two meetings in August, in November.
Let's move on to the right here.
And one in December.
I said your life.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, that was not broadcast on yet.
That's the 11th, right.
Well, it obviously was. We're still lying.
Correct.
Say, our board meeting in December is the 11th. It's not on this calendar, it's not more.
Yeah, it's blue.
It's blue.
Okay, you guys, I pulled this off my computer because I wanted it before.
How did you get this off your computer?
It comes as an attachment and you pull it off.
How did you get this? Did you get this?
No.
Did you get this calendar?
My, um...
Did you? No.
My, yes, my ink is dead.
Are you ready?
All righty, go to it.
All right, so before we recognize our board attorney, Art Hardy, I'd like to ask John Crainer to come forward. Did Murray give up on us?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Before we recognize Art, I wanted to give John an opportunity to speak to you on behalf of our financial advisory committee.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. We were asked of the financial advisory committee to undertake a review and recommendation as to whether we should continue the, continue the board, or continue the one mil ad valorem tax levy that was started in 2002 and is coming due again in 2018. So we had a special meeting on the 5th of September. And to keep this fairly, fairly simple and straightforward, we looked at whether we should continue this. And it was unanimous after good discussion that it added extraordinary value to the school system and to our children and that we should continue to use the ad valorem tax levy to finance incrementally opportunities within our school system. As you well know, many of those involve adding teachers, but also adding programs. So then we, and by the way, I think this last year, that resulted in about $53 million incrementally to the budget for that initiative. We were then asked whether we should put this up for election next year and if so, when? It was unanimous that we put it up for election. By the way, last time, 77% of the voters voted for it. And my friend Murray would ask you to remember that 92% of the Longboat Key voters voted for it.
Yep.
And they have six kids.
Yeah. But in any event, so we voted to recommend to the school board that we have this referendum again. The question was whether it should be on a, an election cycle, i.e. November. We have historically done it on a March cycle, which gives you the opportunity between March and beginning of the next fiscal year to make use of those funds and allocate them carefully and selectively. So we, after much discussion, debate, we unanimously recommend to this board that we have an election in March of 2018.
Shirley.
I know that it's the financial advisory committee that you look over how we spend our referendum dollars, but you look over how we spend all of our dollars and how we operate. Do you look at just the traditional public schools budget or do you also look at the budgets and the practices of the charter schools and how they use those dollars?
At our last meeting, we had an in-depth review of the charter school performance and the allocation of finances to that from this board. So yes, we do look at charter schools as well as the, quote, "standard" school system.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
There's been a number of people who have discussed whether we go for three or four years. The financial advisory committee also...
Recommended four.
Recommended four. And I agree that we leave it at four. And here's my rationale. Why limit us to three years when we do not know if the legislature will act? And let's give ourselves greater flexibility. It costs no more money to do this election for three years or four years. And let's see what comes out of the legislature. If they force us to go in 2020, we can, we can do that. But we have found a sweet spot and the sweet spot has been good for us. It costs us much less from this community to raise funds to do a referendum at a special election. It costs us probably at least half what it would cost to put on that campaign in a national election and get the attention of people since we have the presidents and the senate coming up and probably a host of amendments. And we'd fall at the very tail end of that. There's always that under vote of people saying, I'm not going to answer any of these questions. And so, yes, it costs us about $285,000 last time to do this, this election. A small fraction of that goes or is paid for by Longboat Key, but we probably could look at, you know, not doing as much early voting since the population now has changed to more absentee ballots and absentee voting. And is that a good investment, that amount of money, a good investment to get over $200 million over a four-year period? That's really the question. So I, I hope that we will continue to offer the flexibility that we've had in the past.
To tag on to that, we had a robust discussion as to whether we should do this on a four-year basis or lesser. But we also had a discussion about how much this costs and whether it's worth it. And quite frankly, you know, for 200-plus million dollars in our school system, it's for less than $300,000, it's almost a minimus.
Try your ROI is well worth us. Yes, yes.
I want to clarify that when Ms. Goodwin was saying it costs, it costs us less to run the campaign for the March election. You were using the us, meaning the committee that, that, and the community that works to get this passed, not the school district, because the school district doesn't pay for this, this outreach.
No, but I also want to make sure that you, that we talk about the fact that board members cannot advocate yes or no for the referendum. But what we need to do is to be out in the community, educating the community as to where we use the dollars and where we're going to use the current dollars. Eric?
I plan on advocating strongly for yes. I will do that in every forum anybody wants me to talk to. I will be strongly, I won't just be advocating for yes, I will be strongly advocating for yes for the referendum. I won't be expending any school funds to do that because no one's going to pay me to speak, but I will be doing that. I do want to, do want to clarify one thing about the cost of the committee to run an election. While I, my wife is quick to tell me that I'm not the subject matter in many things, I would hazard a guess that the one thing that I'm probably the subject matter expert is, is how much it costs to run an election in Sarasota County. I would think that Eric Robinson probably knows that how much it costs to run an election in Sarasota County more so than anybody else. I think I do more treasure work than anybody else in the county. I think I do more treasure work for committees than anybody else in the county. So I feel very confident and on very solid ground when I say it costs less to run an election in November than it does in a special election. How do I know that? I've run special elections in different counties.[1656.86] I've run November ballot initiatives in this county, other counties, so I've run campaigns and special election campaigns. I'm running a special election campaign down in, in a house and a senate district as we speak right now, doing treasure work. So I have some level of knowledge and expertise in how much it costs to run an election in, in off-election year versus general election year. And I can tell you that it's cheaper to run it in a general election year. And when it comes to down ballot issues, I can tell you this, more people voted in the water and soil conservation district than voted in our referendum. And I bet you most people did not even know that we had an elected water and soil conservation district. You cannot get more down ballot than the water and soil conservation district. So there are people who go down, who go down the ballot. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is, my fear of having it for four years instead of three years is best illustrated on a vote that occurred in 2016, when we had the opportunity to put it on the ballot in 2016, and we chose not to. And then this session, we came extremely close to losing the referendum dollars, because the legislature was going to change the, the voting dates. And so we were in the position, we may have missed out on this election. We may have lost $55 million to our district, and that's $55 million that is solely needed. And Chairman Crainer, you're still my chairman, Chairman Crainer knows very well that money impacts every aspect of our school district. And by putting that at risk of skipping it in 2016, I'm afraid that we may make that mistake again in 2020 and cost this district $55 million that is solely needed. And so because I think the referendum money is so important to our district, I would rather do it for three years.
I think, Mr. Kramer, do you have any more questions that you would like to ask us? Are you okay?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Questions for him. Shirley.
I have a follow-up on, and he is probably getting, probably nitpicky, but you said you've run campaigns--
Treasure work.
Treasure work, and you've spent the, but, I'm treading lightly here, but I thought I read in the newspapers when they were interviewing you about this, that you make no decisions on these, how these dollars are spent, that you just take the money and somebody else--
No, 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 no. I wasn't saying that I know how to run a campaign. I said I know how much it costs, because I physically write the checks. Now, if you want to go to a guy who, who knows how to make the best mail piece, I don't know how to design a mail piece. If you want to find a guy who tells you, "This is where you need to direct your mail, whether you should by TV or radio," I'm not that guy. My level of expertise is extremely, extremely narrow, and my level of expertise is how much something costs. I know how much it costs. I know how much you're going to spend. That I know. But if you're asking me, you know, what color goes with what color to explicit response, I am not that guy. I'm not that guy to figure out which colors or who to direct or who to advertise to. I mean, anybody who knows me knows I am not the, I don't even know what the word is, the guy who's, who's smooth and polished and knows how to, how to win friends and influence people. That's not me. I'm the guy who knows how much things cost.
The one good thing about going out for in 2018, even for four years, is the fact that if the laws change in 2018 or 2019, we will still be ahead and will be able to know, ahead of time, we'll be able to go out for the referendum during an election period. So I, it's not costing us anything. There's no chance that we would lose it, because we would have that extra time to be able to go out again. Wait a minute, Bridget.
Thank you for your work, and the financial advisory has been critical to the district, and I appreciate the, the response and the volunteer time that members of the community do. I just want, from a clarification standpoint, you said this was a special meeting on the 5th of September, correct?
Correct.
And we, I wasn't able to get the minutes from it yet, because they haven't been approved.
I picked them up on the way down here.
Oh, perfect. I appreciate that. And then, and I did get the rolls, but, and typically, was that already on the calendar?
No, it was a special called meeting.
And when did we announce that? It was a special meeting? How, how much in advance notice did members get?
I don't know. But we obviously had--
It was calendared at the conclusion of the previous meeting in October. I believe they had about three weeks of notice. I'm sorry, August.
August, yeah.
Three weeks, and it was set at the same time as usual?
No, it was actually a little bit later. It was 10 o'clock instead of 8 o'clock.
Okay, and is that, I just, I just know that it's a volunteer time, so there are not members who have full-time jobs as well, so I wanted to make sure it was, did it, has that happened before, or?
We had attendance that is roughly common for a meeting--
No, but it was a later time, so I just--
It was a later time. I think we may have in the past, depending on whether we had a presentation, but typically we are on 8 o'clock.
Okay, and that matters, because I think there were certain members that, and I have not spoken specifically to them, but I just think that, that's relevant to make sure that all members were there to participate, if, obviously, if something didn't come up. But that's, that's that part. Obviously, there's no question where I stand on this, and I have brought it up many, many times, and I have since, you know, running for school board and being on the school board, I believe that this election should be in a general election, and I believe it for a number of reasons, and I've spoken to a number of people about it. And I, I think the biggest impact, which, which is important, is to make sure, you put us out to the voters, because you want voter input. I mean, that is the whole purpose of having a referendum, being put to the voters. And you would, so if you take that just clear point, the higher percentage of voter turnout would, in fact, result into why you're actually even putting it out to vote. So if you have something like 13, 14% of registered voters turning out in a special election, it's hard, you're obviously not getting a majority or a significant amount, and I know it doesn't matter general or special, we do have much lower than I'd like to see voter turnout, but it's substantially higher in a general election. And, and I, I think, so that's one part, I mean, that's the whole purpose of putting it on a ballot, is to get feedback from the community. So if we knowingly know, year over year, we have a reduction of voter turnout, and we have 77% approval rate, and that's great, but that's of 13, 14% of the voters in Sarasota County. I still believe that it would pass if it was in the general election, and I think there is a number of evidence that show down ballot initiatives or referendums that passed. He used the example of the Sarasota Soil and Water Group III in 2014 on a referendum that had 42% participation. That's, that's a significant, I mean, I think in this community, it's very evident that people stand behind their schools and they support their schools. I mean, we see it in philanthropic circumstances almost every board meeting. I think the referendum's been around for a very long time, and people understand and see the value, but I believe it's important that we put it on a general election. One, to increase voter turnout, but two, is the cost, which was referenced twice. As a board right now, our job is, we are supposed to, we have to oversee and be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, especially if we're going to go out and ask for them to continue to have that mileage maintain and increase, for them to pay an increase in taxes. And so if we're saying, "It's not that much money," it's not our money, we have to remember that. And if it does cost more from a campaign standpoint, that is not the hat that we're wearing as board members right now. That is a different discussion, whether it's true or not, that is not our role sitting around this table to determine how much an actual election would cost from a fundraising campaign, from a, you know, political action committee or whatever that would be. As board members, our job is to look at what is the best use of taxpayer money, and you can make your own decisions on supporting the referendum. I think the referendum has tremendous value, but I think that we put it at significant risk, and we also, I think it contradicts what we're trying to ask the community to pay for. Please continue letting, allowing us a levy 1 mil, but we're going to expend $300,000 to do so, as opposed to putting on a general, which would cost us nothing. I think you have to let it stand on its own merit, and I believe it will, and I believe every single person around here believes it will. So I think you, you undermine the credibility of it by putting it on a general election, excuse me, a special election. Everybody knows that the purpose for a special election is, people will likely come out to vote for something, then against it. So it protects the outcome of what you're seeking.
And we're also going out with Longboat Key, and let's see, Venice City Council, they have a separate meeting, a separate voting time. Who else?
Have we quantified the amount that it would be?
The city of Sarasota has a separate election, but they're on the different years.
Yeah.
And so have we quantified the cost to the district for the special election, this go around 2018?
I have to call on Shirley first, and then Jane will give you the answer. Go ahead, Shirley.
You talk about the low turnout, but, you know, those are the same kind of turnouts that, you know, the city commissions get to elect their city commissioners, who look at what their boards are. I, and I, and I think, Bridget, you make a lot of good points in what you're talking about, but I do think we also ought to think about what it costs to run an election for those people who are out there working for us. I do believe we need to look at that. It's not just the dollars we spend. And, you know, no disrespect to Mr. Robinson, but I've, I've run campaigns, my own, I know how much they cost, and I know how much cost you have to put into it. And, and the bottom line is, you have to go out and reach likely voters. The likely voters for a March election, we all understand, are less than the likely voters for the November election. We know that, but we also say, well, we want to also connect to the public, and, and we have all of that time, because we're the only thing happening then. The newspapers are covering it, the TVs are covering it, where we're telling our community we're doing this. But those community members that are out there pushing the election, they've got a lot less people that they need to reach out to, because a lot of people aren't going to go vote, and they just don't, because they, they're going to count on everybody else. But at the same time, it would be, cost a lot less for somebody who opposed the referendum to go out there and raise money, to oppose the referendum. I too, I know what it costs to run an election, and I know it costs a lot less money to run an election in August, because I've been on the ballot in August, or for the primary, sometimes it's in September, versus November. And what, and I know that it costs more to run an election in a presidential year than in a non-presidential year, because there's a lot more voters that are coming out. So I've had those numbers on my campaigns. I threw most of them out, that's the last move, but I, I know how many people I had to reach, and I know that a piece of mail and the cost of mailing it, it's roughly a dollar a piece, and it's how many voters you have to go out to and reach. And, and I think that is something that we ought to look at. But what I like is that, when we have it in March, we've got the spotlight. We've got the community's spotlight in March, and we can tell the community what we do for our schools. We're the only ones going out and talking to the Rotary Clubs and all of them. We, we're not fighting with everybody else that's on the ballot. And in 2020, we even have the Constitutional Revision Commission things coming up. So, 2018, but there'll be others, too. But I think we need to be looking at, you know, what else is on that ballot, and, and I think what we want to do is educate the community on what we're doing in our schools, and I think we've just have a better chance of doing that in March, because there isn't all this other stuff going on.
Hi, Jane.
Just to reiterate, we have to go to special election, and there's been some confusion. There was confusion last time with people thinking that we didn't have to go in March, we could go in November. We cannot go next November of 18. That will not work. We must go with a special election in March of this year, and then after that, we have flexibility as to whether we go in three years or four years. I want to leave that as flexible and not come to that conclusion at this point in time. But yes, I, I want 77% of the vote. I think that was great. I'd like more than 77% of the vote. So whether it's a special election or a regular election, I think it's really good for our district. But, you know, basically, having the conversation with our community was the reason why in 2001, I and other people in this community got together and did this, this organization, community organization to support the referendum, and it has never changed. We liked having the ability of going out and talking, and having the superintendent go out and talk. And if you wanted to talk to a Rotary, chances are you'll get a Rotary in January or February, whereas if it's an election year of 2020, and we have the president, and we have the senate, and we have many other legislators that are out there, we may not be able to get an audience with some of these organizations and some of the groups. So our message will not be as easy in the community. It will not be as direct a dialogue, and I think it's great to have those, those chances. This population in Sarasota County changes about every, about 15% every year, according to what I, what I know of statistics. And the month in which the most people that own property in this county are here is March, and that's the reason why March was decided. So I hope that we will continue. I hope, I know that we have to go with a special election. We can't go in, in 18. I've got a couple of emails that I don't think people were clear about that. We must go in March of 18, and then we can make that determination or make that decision later on. I am against the fact that we have all of this impact on home rule. It is only money in Sarasota County that we're talking about. We're not talking about anything in Manatee, or, or my friends in Charlotte who are looking at this referendum, and my friends in Lee County who are looking at a sales tax referendum for next November. We're not, we're not talking about any of those things. But, you know, this is our decision in Sarasota County, and this is our money in Sarasota County we're talking about. And it really is annoying to me, as an elected official, that Tallahassee thinks that it's their decision to make for us, and that they are tipping and, and, and moving more and more to taking away the power that we have as elected officials in Sarasota County.
Amen. That's exactly why I'm in favor of the four years referendum and going out in March. I think it's, ROI, the return on investment, is really high, so you want to talk about bottom line and ROI, which I hear tossed around here. You can see that you really get your return on investment. Bridget.
I want to clarify something, and I'm sorry if I didn't do that. Obviously, I'm very passionate about this issue. I know we would be holding it in March of 2018. It is the language that's included on that referendum is whether the duration is for three years or four years. And I understand how passionate everyone around this table is for the referendum, and I think that's important to recognize. I wish that you, there's foresight here, that you would, I believe there, you undermine the credibility and the value of the referendum and the support that it actually has by continually putting it on a special election. And I do encourage, again, you have to, there's two different discussions, and as a board, our fiduciary responsibility first starts at, you know, with the dollars that we spend within the school, school district's budget, and then the separate topic is then, how do you run a campaign based on those decisions? I don't, they should not be married together. They're two different conversations.
If I can answer you, Bridget, we don't marry them together.
But I've heard it actually stated on a number of occasions as the reason, excuse me, as the reason as to why to maintain the general, excuse me, the special election in March. It was married with the cost, it was needed for the, for the election, to get out there and educate the public.
But that's not us.
If I may follow up, no, it was done, it was three times, I've heard it. Second is, we talk about the time that the, the community would be willing to hear us during a, gets bogged down during a general election. I, and I know many of us, too, we're constantly talking to the community about what's going on. We shouldn't certainly be waiting until the end of the, into an election cycle when we have to go ask for more money, if that's the case, if you want to look at it that way. That's a consistent discussion, and I would yet to hear of any organization during any time of the year that would say, "No," that they wouldn't want us to come speak. So I don't think that's a fair, fair topic, but again, numbers don't lie. So let's just go back and look at the percentage in Sarasota County's referendum in 2014. We had 15.63%.